Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Ansonia Board of Alderman meeting, the full board meeting for September 9th. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Prendergrass student Gia Spurizini. Ready when you are, Gia.
I think she's frozen.
She is frozen. It's still better than what we do.
Sure.
Yeah, she did freeze. We'll give her a second, see if it comes back on.
She may have logged out, maybe logging back in.
Okay.
I see her, but no.
Yeah, and she's gone. So she's coming back in.
I see her back in.
Yeah, let's wait for her.
Hey, Gia, back with us?
He shows up on my. The big moment. Should have had her like Google headquarters and like jamming internet. I'm gonna quickly take roll call. Eyeball, I'm looking.
Hey, John, do you maybe want to kick her and see, I don't know, Dr. Joe, can you maybe message her to join back in or something? I don't know if she's stuck?
I am trying to email mom right now and see if they can get on.
Okay.
I did message her to put the video on because she is with us and it looks like the sound is active.
Good evening. Trish, I'm here.
How you doing?
Good.
We see you now, Gia.
There we go. All right, let's go.
All right, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, Gia Spurizini from Prendergrass, please rise for the pledge.
Good evening. I pledge allegiance to the flag
of the United States of America.
For the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Way to go, Gia.
Good job, Gia.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You, Ansonia Public Schools, please keep sending somebody every month. And we'll give them, we'll give them some action. Thank you, Gia. Trish, can we get a roll call?
Sure. Alderman King. I thought is here.
I'm here.
Yep, yeah. Alderman Farrar.
Here.
Alderman Adamowski.
Here.
Alderman Tar.
Yeah.
Alderman Cassetti.
Here.
Alderman Genetti.
Here.
Alderman Knott. Alderman Hardy.
Here.
Alderman Yaman.
Here.
Alderman Rivers.
Here.
Alderman Mamon.
Here.
President Schuer.
Here.
Alderman Lovinsky.
Here.
I believe I have 12, 12 present and two absent.
All right, I declare a quorum. Minutes.
Did you call Mario out? Did I miss that? Did you call Mario? Sorry.
I did. All right, Alderman Duranty.
Oh, maybe I missed it. I'm sorry. Sorry, Trish.
No, it's okay. Is it here? No, right?
He's one of the two. Yep, 12 and two.
Correct.
All right, so minutes. Consideration of the previous minutes, our last meeting was August 13th, 2024.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion by Cassetti, who was the second round that?
Me, Tony.
Second or Mamon, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining?
Abstain.
One abstention, Yaman. Motion carries. Public session, this is your opportunity for the public to speak up. It's a quick reminder of our very few rules. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less and please identify yourself for future follow up in the public record. Anyone who's interested in speaking tonight, I see two real hands up. The first one I saw was Ellen Tressel, so you're first up.
Okay, thank you so much. This is my second time ever coming to an Alderman meeting. It's an honor and a privilege to be here, so thank you very much. I live at 153 Main Street. And I had come last time sort of as a representative of All In for Derby and Sonia. I still am part of that group, but I'm really here tonight to ask or talk about just a couple of other things. The most important one is the community garden. I am working with Katie Poole. I don't know if any of you know her. She is kind of a lead, the community garden movement here in the valley. And so we have some information to get, to see how Ansonia might be able to work with us or we with Ansonia concerning community gardens in Ansonia. So the first point, I have a few bullet points. Community gardens have not had an umbrella organization since the United Way, which maybe some people will remember relinquished that relationship. And Masaro Farms continues to provide some support with tools and seeds and seedling. But that's all the support that we're getting. And the area has actually eight gardens. I don't know all the towns that they're in, but two of the community gardens are here in Ansonia. Aside from a third one, which is at the nature center, that's a self-managed plots that they have there. But what we're going to, what we're talking about doing is coming together as the Valley Community Gardens Garden Club, which would I think like Seymour, Oxford, Derby and Sony, not sure if there's any other town. And so we're asking for the towns, the town administrators to list the community garden on the, as a resource on the town website. That's one thing that we're asking for. And we have a place now for people to sign up and receive emails from. And we can supply cards to City Hall with all our information. And then we're also asking if there are resources that the town may be able to share. We're talking like a hundred dollars a year, maybe $250 a year. Would include things like seeds, seedlings, mulch, we're looking for benches, new signage, and then there's also requests we have for non-financial resources that could include mowing, weed whacking, debris removal, delivery of new equipment, like if we order something and it gets delivered to a certain location, but we would need a truck to pick it up and just bring it to our community gardens. So, yeah, I just wanted to introduce that. I don't know exactly where in the Alders, you know, where this belongs, but that's something I wanted to mention. And then I also wanted to ask or talk about the train service. I had been noticing for about three weeks that the trains were not adhering to a consistent schedule. I think that's fixed, but I just wondered if there's anybody who's kind of concerned with the trains or monitoring the trains now that they're not running anymore. And did I have a third thing I wanted to ask about? I probably used up all my time, so thank you.
All right, thank you for coming. So for the community garden stuff, I'm going to refer that to the mayor's office and staff. And I'm sure, you know, we can figure out what, you know, where we go, the next direction from there. And then for the trains thing, I'm assuming that goes through the DOT.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk a little bit about that to the Aldermen and women. Aldermen and women, I'm gonna talk to them about it tonight.
Oh, thank you so much.
Great.
Mr. Trusler, can I ask you, if someone is interested in the community gardens or volunteering or participating in some way, how would they reach you?
I can offer my phone number, my email, either way is good.
Can you put it in the chat section of the Zoom that you're on?
Yes, I certainly will. I'll be happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Next speaker had his, I'm assuming still on, Mike?
There we go. Michael Egan, 103 Ben Street. I have a couple of things. In Rockville Valley, the city did an outstanding job in notifying us, the residents about the situation. On Rock Hilltop, the city was a miserable failure. Our houses. I knew about it, but it still rocked me. I got up initially and started looking, but then I remembered a blasting. My neighbor, my daughter next door, they were not aware of it. They started searching through the house, wondering just what happened in the house. I called them and I let them know what was going on. Could this city make the people be aware when there is going to be blasting within the city so that we could be prepared? And in the future, I think it's a miserable failure that was permitted on the first day of school between two grammar schools and with kids walking to Emmett O'Brien right by that. So anyways, I think in the future, I'd like you to pass something that would notify the people. And the second item I wanted to speak about is a situation possible in Ansonia in the future, similar to what happened to Oxford, Seymour, Southbury. We have Two Mile Brook that flows down. Main part of it starts in the nature center, but there's at least three or four other small streams that enter into it. Now, years ago, when Ford Street was being redone, they took the bridge out and they replaced it with a pipe going underneath the road. That will act as a dam if we have one of those severe storms. When they first did that, I complained to the city because the flow going out was different than what it was when the bridge was there. The flow backs up. We used to be able to go back in the backyard here. We had blueberry bushes there. We were able to pick them. Today you can't. The swamp is a little higher now. But if we have one of those storms, it's going to be a disaster similar to what happened up in Seymour, Oxford and the other towns up in that area. At this time, there's a housing develop and going in. And they don't even have a a situation where the water is going to be retained up there. They do have a situation where there's in-ground detention ponds. Now, when they put in the airport property and the other places, they put in detention ponds. Up here, it seems like they're infringing on the wetlands. There are wetlands on that property and I don't know who oversees it, but it should be overseen that they stop infringing on that. The people down here are going to get flooded out. The city's going to be in a disaster similar to Seymour, Oxford, Southbury. I know that it's a major thing, but could you please have an engineer look at it? I mean, you go down to Ford Street and you can't even see the brook now. It's filled in so much around it. Thank you for letting me speak. And thank you, Alderman, Mr. Lovinsky, for permitting this for me. Thank you.
Good job. Thank you, Mr. Egan.
Thank you for coming. Anyone else from the public who wishes to speak with, to the Alderman tonight? Anyone else?
I did also ask for a park update at some point, if somebody could just sort of talk about where that stands. Be addressing that tonight.
Okay. Third and final call on the public session.
Hi, could I speak?
Who, yeah, please identify yourself.
Oh, sorry. My name's Thomas Capasso. I own 128 Jewett Street.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. So I was on the, I think the the session last week or last month and it, I just wanted to, you know, go over everything that was, you know, happening. I'm trying to rehab this house and I have a lien on the property, a blight lien. And I'm trying to get the lien negotiated. My lawyer, Dominic Thomas, he's on vacation, otherwise he would be speaking on my behalf tonight. But I'm looking to get the lien negotiated and removed so I can move forward with financing so I can fix up my property. And I really haven't gotten any clarification. So I just wanted to have a chance to speak to the Board of Aldermen if they had any questions for me.
Thank you.
Could I interject here? This property is in, is in my ward. And of course, anybody trying to upgrade their property is a plus for any, anybody in my ward. And I want him to know that I support him and the fact that if he wants to negotiate his, his his, his lien, he could take it up with us. But the thing is, is he can't get a loan unless the lien is relieved. So he's in a tight spot and I think he needs to talk to town council about this.
Yes, I agree. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, and you know, the previous owners I bought the property from, I believe roughly about two years ago. Let the property go, as you know, I'm sure you've seen the property and I bought it with the intention.
Think we lost them.
Because of that hardship.
Back.
And now positioned to do it now, but I have this lien that accrued about $30,000 and it's kind of unfair because the $30,000 is all things that were, you know, done on the property, neglected on the property prior to me buy. As I bought it, all these things started accruing. And I had this hardship in my life, which I wrote you guys a letter. I don't know if everybody had a chance to read it last month and.
We've, we've previously discussed this. We did send it back to the, the building department. So I would recommend connecting with the city. Yeah. I'm ringing the mayor's office and/or the building department or both. We did, we did discuss it. We sent them with some recommendations.
Oh, yeah, and my lawyer did give them a timeline on how long it would take to do like the roofing and the siding. It seemed like they just cared about the roofing and the siding, the outside appearance of the house. But the house is completely gutted. It's a three-family house and I need to dump about $350,000 to bring it back to its former glory. And I need to get financing, obviously, to do all this. So that's where, as you know, the previous gentleman said, I'm kind of in a tight spot and I can't do that with a $30,000 lien over my, over our head.
Who has that timeline?
Dominic Thomas, my attorney forwarded that to Rhonda yesterday or the day before.
Well, I'll reach out to Rhonda too, to see if we can get her. Josh, did you get a copy of it?
With a six, it was just an email, just a brief email with a six-month.
We saw it last month.
Yeah, can you?
No, this is, no, this was.
Yeah, we asked for the time.
Correct, yes. And he wrote the email yesterday and that was a six-month timeline for, you know, getting the roof done and the siding done on the property. The whole project is probably a year to 18 months project. Does anybody who's in construction knows or has seen this property? It needs everything, roofing, siding, complete, everything, flooring, kitchens, everything. It's completely gutted. But that's what has to be done, new plumbing, electrical, everything, up to code.
All right, so we did ask for that, that information and I didn't, I wasn't aware that that came in yesterday, so I'll get that and get that to the Alderman. And in the meantime, feel free to reconnect with the, with the city.
They can come in anytime, talk to us.
Okay, yeah, my lawyer will be back in town next week and he would have spoke on my behalf. And maybe he's better, you know, suited to do so, but I just wanted to move forward with my project as soon as possible. That's why I wanted to jump on and just explain my situation, you know, not just have you guys read it in a letter.
No, thank you.
If you had any questions or, you know, I want to make the, you know, I want to fix the house, make it one of the nicest houses on the block and I'm sure that would benefit everybody.
Yeah.
Would. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you very much. Thank you for the time.
You bet.
Have a good night.
All right, last call for any speakers from the public. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public session, move on to public official session. Mayor Cassetti.
Evening, President Schuer. Members of the Board of Aldermen, residents of the great city of Ansonia. Wanted to take a moment to remember the lives lost in Oxford and to reflect on the damage and devastation that occurred as a result of the flooding event two weeks ago. Our prayers and thoughts go out to them. I want to thank Jared Heon, R E M D, Chief Williams, Chief Hodgson, and all the fire chiefs and captains. Mike Warhola, Chief of Arms, Tim Holman and Public Works, and everyone involved in responding to the flood. Our team really pulled together for Ansonia. I ordered the closing of the flood walls for the first time in over 50 years. This was a truly historic event that helped save our city from flood damage. I stand ready and my offer stands to help Oxford and Seymour, our good neighbors to the north, as they work to recover from the damages suffered on August 18th. We will help as needed. I know many of you have already helped out. As the weather turns cooler, we turn our attention to the Harvest Fest happening on September 28th on Main Street. See you all there. As usual, it will be a fun-filled, family-packed event. Thank you to Rich DiCarlo and the Culture Commission Corporation Council, John Marini, Public Works, Arms, Fire and Police for another success, successful event of Rockville Valley. Over 8,500 people attended Rockville Valley to Extreme Queen and many other bands and saw a spectacular fireworks display. I was happy to see such a great crowd. Thank you to our partners Seymour and Anne Marie Dragonis for Selectwoman. Fall makes me think of leaves turning, hot chocolate, pumpkins and demolition. Yes, that's right, demolition. You will hopefully be granting a waiver for emergency demolition to occur with our sky bridges over the Metro North rail line. Train service has halted as a result of the recent flooding and my staff has asked DOT and Metro North for permission to conduct demolition activities of the four bridges. Sheila and John can tell you more about it in their updates. Demolition has resumed on 35 North Main Street and we will have more to report on that as well. Enviro consultants have begun work on Olson Drive. She will have a schedule for you. Lots of activities and hopefully next month, some news of new businesses coming to our great city. I better end the speech before I say too much more, so thank you all. God bless you all and God bless the city of Ansonia.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up, John Marini, Corporation Counsel. Maybe.
Yep. Thanks, Mr. President, members of the board. First, on behalf of the mayor's office and all our team here at City Hall, just a moment of silence for the 23rd anniversary of September 11th attacks coming up tomorrow. Tomorrow, the Legion and our local communities will be conducting a remembrance ceremony. Want to get the exact time of that? Mayor Cassetti will be in attendance there. Mayor, when is the exact time of that? I believe it's on the Derby Green.
We, we are going to gather at 8:45 at Webster Park on Central Street and Father Salami Drive for the ringing of the bell for approximately 15 minutes. Everybody could have a chance at ringing the bell, but we're going to do that for 15 minutes from the first plane hit and then the second plane hit. But I hope that everybody could be in attendance to that, especially the Aldermen.
Okay, so that's Father Salami Drive, 8:45.
That's correct.
Okay. Right on with our update, I first want to point out important update on the WPCA sewer treatment plant sale. As you know, you have your milestones in front of this board and in front of the public, the timeline. And important update to that timeline, we did foresee taking a look at the current WC, WPCA budget ahead of the, the closing. Closing, we're looking at December and we're taking a look at how the rate would be set for the duration of the year and how bills would be paid for the duration of the year. Very, very important point to note for the public and for the Aldermen to convey to their constituents, there will be no changes until the closing. Which means if you've paid both installments of your bill, you're done. You were done until the closing in December. If you've only paid one, you need to pay the other. But there will be no additional bills. There will be no need for adjustments, no need for credits. We've been able to streamline the process, working with Aquarian. And of course, our finance department, Mr. Miller and Mr. Bishara are working with us to coordinate with Aquarian on the easiest path forward for our residents. We want to avoid confusion and therefore we were able to make it so that we will simply stick with the bills that are already out. Both installments need to be paid, but there will be no adjustments, no changes until the closing scheduled for December of this year. There will be posts online. We'll like to do a robocall as well and a press release. That way everyone understands what's going on. And of course, if you have any questions tonight or later, well, everyone will be more than happy to answer. Second, union negotiations are starting to go on. It's, it's that time of year. Our supervisors, UPSU Supervisors Unit and our UPSU Part-Time Nature Center Unit are up for negotiation. Those negotiations are ongoing. I expect to have some update on the status once we get into the real substance, probably October or November of this year. DCD and our grant for 6.7 million, driving more demolition activities downtown. Just to let you know, we've been working with State Council to finalize those documents and that's moving forward and that really dovetails nicely into Shilla's report on what to expect from all of that activity. Shill?
Wow. That's it? Okay.
I can, I can give my, my longer, more in-depth report.
Any questions for Corporation Counsel from the Aldermen before we let you off the hook? All right, we'll move on. Economic Development, Sheila O'Malley.
Yep, typically Corporation Counsel updates you on the Opera House, so I will, I will do that. The architects have scheduled two site visits. They completed one. They'll be back in for another one with engineers. Code compliance engineers, they're doing measurements and and documenting historical data for, as part of the survey and. and documenting historical data for as part of the um survey and planning grant that they are uh going to complete for us. So as I think John has mentioned in the past, that's going to be a um you know, a document that will provide the cost for all of the renovations and um, you know, a roadmap. So that's that. Um, someone mentioned Gaddison Park. Um, so the bid package will be ready next week and the first uh phase of the park renovations will be focused on the playscape area and on a rubber multi-surface for younger adults, uh, young kids, excuse me. And the phase two of the park improvements will be spelled out in a master plan, which includes cleanup, tree cleaning, benches, tables, lightings. So next week, um, we'll have a package out and it'll hit the streets for a contractor. Uh, the mayor mentioned Olson Drive. Um, they did go out to um Olson Drive this week, the contractors and viral consultants, they're installing test pits for waste um characterization. Uh, within the next week, they'll start um processing the soil. You'll see a large spreader arriving um this week as well, and then they'll begin the screening um of large piles and debris and um moving those piles off-site. So that's what's happening there. Um, demolition is occurring at S H W. That's on the remaining portion of um thirty-five North Main Street. Um, Building eleven has those abutments there. They stick out of the other building, which is technically the same building, but we call it Building twelve. So those um, those walls and that, those buttresses will be removed um this week and next week, uh, probably for the for the next month. The um waiver, which is on your agenda, is um because the trains have halted. We've been working with Nargituck Valley Council of Government on the bus schedule because we have had residents come in uh to the mayor's office asking about the trains and, you know, missing the bus, et cetera. So it's taking taking some getting used to, but the trains Metro not North has stopped the trains. There's been some damage to the tracks because of the flooding. Um, and there has been, they want to do some repairs. So we thought, um, we asked permission from Metro North and D O T to move forward with our demolition of the four bridges, two walking bridges and two pipe bridges. And we received the okay to move forward with that project. So you will see um well, as many of the bridges as we can take down during the shutdown for the trains. And uh, you know, we'll we'll hope, we'll try to make good progress while the trains are down. Otherwise, the um the bidding process, et cetera, will take too long and the trains will be back up and running. And the trains shut down from, I want to say like three forty-five A M to maybe six thirty. Um, not sufficient amount of time to do demolition and certainly not a a great time to be um working out on the tracks. So we're hoping uh you'll grant the waiver. That's it for now.
Thank you. Any questions for Sheila from the alderman?
Sheila?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any notes from Metro North, how long the service is supposed to be down for?
Yeah, that's what everyone's asking. Um, I've been, I've been working with uh the C O G uh to try to determine. They don't have a definitive timeframe. Um, we're we're looks like it's going to be over a month that they'll be shut down, so um, I'm not, I'm not expecting anytime soon.
An additional month?
An additional month.
So how quickly can we mobilize this demolition while this service is still offline?
Well, we're we're um, we're, we have a meeting Thursday with Metro North and uh D O T. And if they give us the go-ahead, we, and you folks give us the go-ahead, we can, we can mobilize within two weeks.
Okay.
Two weeks, Tone.
And and how how long, how long does the demolition take, you think? Is that going to be a few days kind of thing or?
Yeah, it'll be a few days. The the um the demolition has to occur on both sides of the track, so you'll have one uh picker on one side and a picker on the other side, so they can pull it apart that way instead of trying to, you know, what you normally do with demolition is it 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 falls in within the center. But in this instance, you're going to pull it to one side and pull the other to the other side. So hopefully, that's the plan anyway, but yeah. Um, I mean, it won't take long. It's it's the cleanup and removal and so forth and getting away from the tracks, getting clear of the tracks. That's that makes it a little, makes it tricky.
Yeah, we don't want to compromise the tracks, obviously, to, you know, shut the valley down further, but
Yeah.
you know, I think with the time that's there, it sounds like we have an opportunity. So if they can get that done in probably under two weeks, you know, that kind of clears us within that month time, so that that two weeks becomes critical.
Yep, it really does. Um, but there, you know, Metro North and D O T are co- are cooperating because they want the, they want those bridges down as much as we do. So um, you know, for the safety of their passengers and so, you know, we're all working together towards the same goal.
We can find a s- small ray of light in the uh, you know, disasters that happened to uh Oxford and Seymour. If we could use this to our advantage, some way to pull those down, that'd be great, so.
Yep, absolutely.
Thanks for your work on this.
Nope. Thank you.
Any other questions for economic development?
The Gaddison Park uh timeline?
Yes, next week. Uh, John, next week, the bid package is ready for Phase One, which will be the playground with a rubberized surface. That's going out to bid next week.
So it's important, we haven't talked about it um too much at this level, but it's important that there are three segments, really, three priorities uh with this project. Um, number one, obviously, the improvements to the playscape, the improvements to the playable surface and areas of Gaddison Park to enhance its ability to serve the community. Um, the second, security. We understand that this area, um, the investment in this area needs to be protected and also that this area is a spot which uh can use more security in general, is in fact probably the nexus of um our se- ongoing security effort that leads into a larger security investment with our bonding package that was approved last fall. As you know, those projects have are in the process of being studied and finalized for borrowing early, early next year. One of those items is citywide surveillance and cameras. But if you were going to pick a place for that project to kick off, certainly it's the Gaddison Park area and the Fourth Street area. So we will also be looking um in the short term for security that protects not only this investment, but more importantly, the community using Gaddison Park and the Gaddison Park area. So this is a great uh kickoff to that. Thirdly, right, if you're talking about improvements to the play area, if you're talking about uh improvements to security, you're also taking a look at aesthetics and we also will be involving a component of aesthetics in that bid because we also want to control, you know, the environment um to en- ensure that it's established for families, for children. Um, so you'll see basically those three components. We know we have a small amount to work with. Um, unfortunately, we we know the costs of even play areas these days and a hundred thousand is basically gone like that. So uh we will be looking for opportunities to uh have some synergy with some of the already approved bonding, right? To uh to make this money go further as it needs to go further for the residents. And of course, other fields, you know, just a preview of things to come. Our field committee has been hard at work. Our engineers have done a lot of work based on their direct input. We're talking about improvements to just about every utilized field in the entire city of Ansonia. This is a big one and we've wanted to get it right with the input from those that know best, the volunteers um and and others that that serve um our sports programs, our recreation programs and have been doing this for decades. And their input is exactly what's fueling the designs uh that are likely going to come to this board by the end of the year. Again, it's all timeline is all on track because our intention is really not to borrow until early next year and that all goes into our idea of making sure that we're keeping debt service costs low while getting all these projects done. We don't want to hit everybody with debt service that throws the budget out of whack. So we're very much um on course. Also, we all know, you know, in over the last, you know, twenty years, we know that the issues with making sure things are engineered correctly, making sure all costs are accounted for. We don't want to push a project forward without that because we don't want to run into a situation where there's a shortage or an unexpected delay. So we're getting everything ready to go. Uh, so when it gets to this board, it'll be very vetted. And then at that point, of course, it's going to be up to this board to make the final decisions and uh actually, you know, hit the trigger and get things borrowed. So um, that's Gaddison Park and and a whole lot more um as well, looking forward to our projects, which include everything from that to the new middle school that's on the agenda tonight, to a lot of other improvements, emergency services, safety, uh, critical infrastructure. So we've got a lot, a lot going on just on that front. That's all been in the engineering process. So of course, if you've been thinking about that as a resident, just know it's coming back to this board vetted and ready to discuss and to move forward later this year.
Yeah.
Can I have one more Sheila question?
Yep. Hit it.
Oh. I I don't know if we're trying to replicate the surface of the moon on Franklin Street, but we're getting pretty darn close. Um, we have an update from the state on what is happening over there because seems like each time I ask, it gets worse and worse. So residents around the Franklin area, I apologize, but what is happening?
It it really is. I I come that way. I leave and come come into work and leave to go home that way. So it's it's very uh frustrating and I can imagine for the residents, it's horrible. Um, so they they put in a gas line as well. Um, as well as all the other um, you know, um corrections they're making on that street. The state plans, again, the state plans to pave um curb to curb. They will repave that road. The only um, the only sticking point is the sidewalks and the mayor and John and I are talking to D O T about those sidewalks because, you know, I I can't see they're going to have a brand new road and sidewalks that aren't finished, which we will, as the mayor said, he's committed to doing the sidewalks and we will um secure the funding needed, but doesn't doesn't really make a lot of sense that they wouldn't do the entire street. Um, but they will repave. Uh, we're looking at another month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but Sheila, it will be done before winter.
Yes, sir.
We're not, we're not going to let this roll roll on. And I remember when the timeline was June.
Right.
You know, I mean, it's so it just dragged on through the whole summer and understandably, there's been, you know, some other emergencies to attend.
You're right. And I'm, you know, listen, I'm not making excuses for the state. I'm just I'm telling you that when you open up these old roads, like open it up on old building, you come across things that you didn't anticipate. So um, the extent of the damage and the extent of the drainage system that they're putting in is, you know, it's a, it's a huge project. No, no excuses. Needs to get, needs to be completed.
Absolutely. And and the road certainly needs to be paved, but I think, you know, I mean, I know you are know you have my full support and I know you have Chicago's as well in terms of the sidewalks. Um, we've been advocating for that for years now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And lighting.
Yeah, we will definitely have a backup uh backup source to do the sidewalk, so.
And lighting.
And lighting. It's, yeah, it's, it really, it's sorely, uh, it's been sorely neglected and again, it's a state road and it's our, you know, leads right in, connects Nolan to downtown, so it's very important.
Thank you. Let me, no other questions?
Yes, uh, I'm not sure if this is a question for Sheila or John. Um, I just wanted to mention, I I had the opportunity to attend the um community meeting or public hearing uh that the Valley Council on Governments had uh concerning the uh co- uh co-pond uh dam, right? Uh, Josh, I think you were on the Zoom section uh for for that. Uh, I attended it in in person. Uh, as as did about sixty, seventy uh people, so it was, it was well attended. I I think uh in the main, the the plan is extremely impressive. Uh, and it's going to be good for the the towns involved, the the river. Um, will populate fish up the river, but one of the aspects of it, one of the objectives of it is to, uh, which has not gotten much attention, is to um um enable access to the river from Ansonia. And, you know, we do not have any access to the Nargituck River currently, right? Uh, it's either blocked by the work that the Army Corps of Engineers did uh or is blocked by what is now defunct uh industry, right? So there is this gate uh on Liberty Street that is uh that leads to where the Ansonia turbine is. And one of the the potential uh uh effects of this project is to open up access to the river uh from that neighborhood uh to um um, you know, or or a access uh get rid of that gate and the turbine and open up access uh to Ansonia residents um through that, through that area where you can go right down to the river. Uh, you know, you you'd be able to fish, you'd be able to enjoy the river environment and so on. I I would just uh I would just ask that the uh the administration get fully behind this aspect of it uh because they may not have enough money for everything um as as time goes on. But uh I think this would be important to our economic development as well as any recreation potential uh or just just quality of of life to be able to have uh access to some part of the um Nargituck River as many of our neighboring towns uh do.
Good points.
It's a comment, not not a question.
Yeah.
Thanks, Steve.
And Steve, I think it looks, you know, based on some of the renderings that were across from Olson when they expand that next section, it looked like there was an overhang that would allow for, you know, fishing at that section of the river. I'm not sure you know, how deep that is. I'm not a, you know, my my sense of fishing is, you know, the 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 ShopRite fish counter, so not much of a fisherman, so I couldn't.
I I I think you're correct. The problem is getting down there, is getting access to it.
Right.
Right along Olson Drive though, Steve.
Uh, yeah, I don't think you can do it from Olson Drive, but uh, you know, you, there there is this opportunity on on Liberty Street according to the, according to the engineers that um, you know, have have designed the uh, the uh Co-Pond project.
So are you saying put a pier or something or do it right from the shore?
Well, I I think you can, uh, I think when, once that boardwalk and the gate and that turbine is removed, uh, as I understand it, uh, you can create a a walkway right down to the uh the shore of the river.
Okay.
And again, that is one of the potential objectives of this of this project. And again, it hasn't gotten a lot of attention, but for Ansonia, I think this would be uh one of the uh the most important uh objectives.
Sheila, we'll have to see what that looks like once that all gets cleared out because.
Yeah, that's fine. And I can share with you as they go along, they're they're selecting a designer for the deconstruction of the dam next, so we want, we want to stay in close contact with them and we have been, we've been talking to the C O G and um, thanks for your support, Steve.
All right, uh, you know, and and Steve, uh, I noticed that you, me and Kurt all shop for our shirts in the same place. Thankfully, we're different sizes. So with that, we'll go to uh Budget Director Kurt Miller, waiting patiently in the wings.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone.
Yes, you certainly are well dressed tonight, Kurt.
Thank you, Steve. I I follow the best. That's what I like to say. Um, so just a a couple of things quick. Um, audit uh for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Um, that process is underway. We're starting to work through uh everything now. Um, sixty-day accruals uh are being worked on, so we should have be able to finalize the revenue numbers. Uh, as we've talked about at previous meetings, uh, expenses came in under budget, which was uh certainly fantastic. So I expect to have more detailed information starting in October. Um, but as of right now, we are on target and moving as we should be. The expectation is we'll be completed uh at some point in mid-December. Uh, Phase One of the C I P uh is expected to begin next week. Uh, we anticipate closing on the initial six point one million dollar, six point one million dollar borrowing package uh on Friday. Um, we've actually uh will be working with Webster Bank on that. They came up with the most uh beneficial financing package for the city. Uh, for any of you that have been following interest rates, uh, the interest rate curve is actually inverted. It's uh more expensive to borrow short-term than it is long-term. Uh, it's something that they've been talking about. It's something that they've been talking about happening for quite some time. But we were fortunate enough to get a twelve month note at four percent, which we felt was extremely strong. And looking at other triple A type rated credits out there. That's the rate that they had been receiving. We're slightly above them. They were about three point eight, three point nine. So coming in at four point oh, unrated is, is exceptional. So the city is continuing, continuing its trend of very favorable and very successful borrowing opportunities. That's credit obviously to this, this board and to boats, to the mayor and his administration on the last ten years that have been working hard to create a very positive atmosphere in the city. And also to our bond council and our underwriter and financial advisor who have partnered with us over the last a couple of years for these successful transactions. And then just in case for some reason I get cut off tonight, or if, you know, Josh boots me, or you guys go into executive session and John Rainey doesn't allow me to, to follow along and kicks me off. I did review all of the information for the request for Ansonia Soccer. They're one of the better groups with providing all the information that's requested. They sent along financials, everything else. I reviewed everything that they sent. Their documents are in order. And it would be my recommendation to, to move forward with their requests. But obviously, that's an agenda item, so we can discuss that in, in more detail. So that, Mr. President, I'll turn it back to you and take any questions that any members may have.
Any questions on the financial front for Kurt tonight from the Alderman? All right. And like you said, we'll pick up, I think that's new business number three.
Yes.
West from soccer. Thank you for your work on that.
For the record, for the record, Kurt, Chicago's questions are expiring tonight, so they do not roll over. He does not have rollover minutes.
That is one hundred percent correct.
Wanted to announce.
Really?
All right. Thank you, Kurt. Next up, Police Chief Wayne Williams. Welcome.
Good evening, President Stewart, Mayor Kasate, Board of Aldermen. Quick update on our personnel. We have one officer in the training academy. We have one officer in field training. We have eight open police officer positions and we have an officer on long-term medical leave. Just a note, I applied for a thirty five thousand dollar grant regarding stolen vehicles and violence associated with stolen vehicles. And I'm waiting for a notification from the state as to the approval of that. I expect it to get approved. I'm just waiting for the notification back from the state. All other grants have just about closed out. So I'm starting to look for some other ones for, for their enforcement opportunities for the city. On August thirty first, you may have noticed in the, we put out some press releases, but on the thirty first, you were speaking earlier about security up in the north end. We did have a shots fired incident on Ford Street after a dispute between several groups. Officers were able to quickly identify a suspect and put out photos of suspects and the vehicle they were looking for. We worked with the Bridgeport Police Department who was able to quickly locate that vehicle in Bridgeport and took three people into custody and seized the firearm that we believe is used in our, our incident. So that case is still in investigation, but we expect arrests on our end. Shortly after that, we had a armed robbery at the laundromat on North Main Street. The, that incident is still under investigation. And then a couple of hours after that, we had a stolen motorcycle crash at Division of Wakeley. When they took the suspect into custody, he was found to be armed with a now nine millimeter ghost handgun. So he was arrested on a variety of charges. And then I, this has been a hot topic over the last couple of weeks. Over the past month, in conjunction with the Department of Labor, Department of Consumer Protection, Department of Revenue Services, we have been assisting in compliance checks at our different smoke shop facilities, including Persian Drive, Bridge Street, Maple Street and East Main Street. Every time we do a compliance check with them, there are labor violations, consumer protection violations, et cetera. But we are also finding criminal violations at these locations. As a matter of fact, our officers are out with them right now at one of the locations executing a search warrant. We have seized pounds and pounds and pounds of THC products from these locations. The Labor Department has shut them down for labor violations and they have to work through getting reopened. As we know, several of these businesses have had previous similar violations. They have also been the victims of robberies and burglaries where the THC products and the cash related to those violations and drug sales are being targeted. Lastly, we're in the planning stages for the Ansonia Harvest Festival on September twenty eighth. I think we, we have the permit into the state, so I think we're in a, a good place on where we are with that. And lastly, on September twenty ninth, the day after the Harvest Festival, the police union is sponsoring a exotic car show at Nolan Field on Sunday morning from eight to eleven. There is no charge to be a visitor at the car show. There is a minor charge to put your car in the car show. I'm here for any questions.
Any questions for the chief tonight from the Alderman? All right. Thanks for coming. We appreciate it. And finally, we have Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Joseph Dabaco. Welcome.
Welcome. Good evening, President Stewart and members of the Board of Aldermen. First, I'd like to just say to everyone that August twenty second, yes, that was our first day of school. And I do want to say in that first day of school, I have to tell you, I attended a closing ceremony between Sikorski and the Teamsters. I was able to see Tony Levinsky there. Tony, it was great seeing you there. But at that event, once again, Sikorski, Lockheed, they did not fail. They offered our kids jobs at the closing ceremony. It's a wonderful program that we have. I, I can't thank Sikorski and the Teamsters enough for, but it was a great way to start the school year. We are thirteen days in and thirteen days in, I do owe a big thank you to Chief Williams and Lieutenant Lynch. All I can say is I, I need to underscore the importance and how vital social media can be. However, it could be that useful tool or however, it could also be a source of misinformation, which could cause more chaos than it's worth. But I, I have to thank the Chief Williams and Lieutenant Lynch. Much thanks goes their way. I also wanted to thank one of our partners, Griffin Hospital. If it wasn't for Griffin having some free physicals for our students, many of our students were able to start the school year on time and also help our kids get their sports physicals. And a big thanks to, to Griffin Hospital. For all those football fans out there, I just want to let you guys know September fourteenth is our first football game at Gilbert. It's away. But I also wanted to give you something that I think we should all be proud of. Recently, Ansonia Public Schools was highlighted in Business View Magazine. I, I did send it to some members of the board. I know Sheila posted it on our, our website. But it's nice to know that the things that we're doing in our public schools have been noticed. And I like to start the year off well right now. Very positive start to the school year. I'm excited, not answering as many bus phone calls. And I'm having more kids start, but we are, just so you know, since the first day of school, our middle school registered eighty new students and our high school registered eighty new students. Our, our numbers are getting larger and larger. I'm, I'm hoping, and I say that because Ansonia is a place people want to move to and come and raise their families. But on my side, I, I can't predict a hundred and sixty new students coming in. So that's just at the middle school and the high school. So it's, it's becoming a destination for people to raise their families, which is a great thing. But for me, it's a budgeting nightmare. But besides that, I, I'm here for any questions that the Board of Aldermen may have.
Any questions for Dr. Joe tonight from the, the board? Anybody but Chicago? Anybody? All right. Thank you.
That is so wrong. That is so wrong. Joe, you're doing a really good job.
Thank you, Alderman Rivers. I appreciate it. Much appreciated.
All right. Thanks again. And that, and so ends our public official session. Thank you all for the, the updates. We'll move on to financial reports. First up, Finance Committee. Hit it. Mamon. Anybody?
I find the mute button. I'm sorry. Like to make a motion to pay all bills if deemed correct. Sorry, Josh.
Second.
Motion to pay all bills if deemed correct by Mamon, second by Rivers, all in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? All right. Motion carries unanimously. There was no boat meeting yesterday, so there's no report in your packet. And then the, the final financial report, the request for refunds in the amount of one thousand four hundred and sixty nine dollars and one cent, if found to be correct.
Motion can second.
Motion by Rivers, second by Mamon, all in favor. You opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Monthly reports, as, as usual, I just want to thank all those departments that submit reports, Fire Marshal, Library, Land Use. Probably forgetting somebody, but we do appreciate those. And I just wanted to get a blanket motion to accept all those reports and place them on file.
Motion to accept those. Second, second to Joe.
Motion by Yaman, second by Mamon, all in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
You opposed? All right. Motion carries. Thanks again. Accidents and, accidents and claims, there was one zero eight dash one zero six two dash two four.
Motion to refer to council.
Second.
Motion to refer to council by Yaman, second by Rivers, all in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Good luck with that. We have nothing under communications.
If the hips behind you, the hips will drive them back.
Uh, okay. I think that's some baseball lessons, but we have nothing under communications, resignations, resolutions or ordinances. So we'll move on to new business. We have three items. The first one was mentioned in the updates. This is Sheila and John, I'm sure can speak to this. Emergency bid waiver for Sky Bridges Thirty Five North Main Street and Ansonia Copper and Brass by Stanford demolition.
Do you want, John, you?
Okay. Sheila already sort of explained this, but the timing is essential. Obviously, the Sky Bridge operation was always going to be a difficult one, coordinating with tracks and the, and the train service. But this is an opportunity to do it. Also, given the effects of the flood, you know, it's extra important that, that we address the bridges before they crumble under their own weight. So if, if there's any questions, I'm, I'm sure we can answer.
I will second the motion that Chicago made. I think that was Chicago's motion.
Second by Mamon. Any other questions?
Just at one point of discussion, is there, is there any specific language that?
Can you just mute? Okay. Go ahead. Go, go ahead, Joe.
Is there any specific language that you need in Chicago's motion for the emergency waiver for the Sky Bridges?
No, just as long as, yeah, just as long as John is comfortable. Because it's a, like, you know, we're doing it per our charter. We can do, and we can waive the bid because it's an emergency. So I think, I think we're all, all set. I think this is good for my purposes anyway. John, I think you're okay, right? With the?
Yes.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Right. Motion carries unanimously. Second item under new business, Second Amendment to Tax Incentive Agreement Shaw Growth Ventures, Inc. This was sent out to everybody.
This, yeah, so this doesn't have anything to do with extending their timeframe for tax incentives or increasing the tax incentive. This is about separating out a parcel that was lumped.
Yeah.
We lumped, we.
The way it was initially conceived is that all of the values were essentially bundled together. And this presents a problem to the applicants here, to our developers. Because they're trying to pursue refinancing, right? To help them continue down the track of redeveloping these properties. So the amendment allows the properties to be treated separately. But it's very important to understand that the change does not impact anything with respect to what the city will obtain from the revenue generated, right? The tax revenue generated off of the assessments. So we've looked at this. We've also brought, brought Dave Grabash, our assessor into the conversation. He's looked at it as well, and we are certain that there is no impact in terms of the revenue we're, we're gaining because of the assessments. This is simply allowing them to present something to their, to their lender, right? That is isolated to the property they're looking to refinance and not bundling all of the properties together. Turned out to be problematic in hindsight, but at the time, of course, just not something that was thought of that it might be problematic if they needed to refinance one of the properties and not the others. We see them progressing down the track of their milestone agreement. They've made good on their project with the ATP Palmer. They're progressing now to a very challenging stage. We always knew it would be challenging. But it looks like they're, they're prepared to tackle it. That's five oh one, the process lab, very daunting. But they are on track to tackle it. This refinancing they're representing is necessary to be able to move forward. And again, this change doesn't affect the substance of the agreement. It just allows them to present their refinancing in, 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 for them, you know, the, the, the most favorable light for their finances.
All right, we.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yep.
Yes.
Just to, just to clarify, John or Sheila, whoever wants to answer it, in terms of the assessment period, it is not changing, right? This is.
Exactly.
Right? This is reflected back to the original, that were in the original agreement. So when we're deleting Article Three and replacing it with Article Three, like Paragraph Two says, that just, we're just dividing it out. Nothing changes in terms of the timeframe and that five-year period is not restarting.
Exactly. It's all the same in terms of timeline. It's all the same in terms of assessment value. The difference is the individual parcels are now sort of extricated from each other. They, they aren't dealt with as one parcel, which is how their bank was looking at this, given our agreement. And it's true. We did basically bundle all of this as if it was one large parcel.
Yep. I just wanted to make sure that that was clarified for the public purposes and making sure everybody knows that we're not resetting that. So, thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
So you need a motion, right?
Yes.
So assuming that, assuming that all things are, are static, as you know, was just said repeatedly by, by John and team, you know, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mamon, second by Yaman to approve the Second Amendment to Tax Incentive Agreement. All in favor?
Hi.
You opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. And the third item, Kurt explained in his piece, he's, he's vetted this request, went through it. Ansonia Soccer Club, to summarize, is requesting a four thousand dollar allocation for the year. And he's still on here. If you, if you have any questions.
Yeah, just to you, Mr. President, just one thing to clarify. It looks like for this year, they're requesting, I did get a letter on the twenty sixth that they're requesting five thousand. However, in the budget submittals that they sent over, they only have the City of Ansonia's contribution of four thousand. So I would go with the four thousand as that's what's put in their budget. So and their budget still is projecting a slight surplus, even with that four thousand. So I would feel comfortable recommending that amount to the board. I'll make a motion on that.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second it, but I have a, a point of discussion. Chicago, can you just maybe?
Second by Mamon, go ahead.
Can you potentially just amend it to notify, you know, the, the soccer board that, you know, for the additional thousand when they, you know, if they come back for, I believe it's a second. I think they do it in spring and fall, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, you generally, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to catch you off. We generally approve the four thousand and it's paid two thousand in the fall and two thousand in the spring. It's how we generally do it. The president of Ansonia Sock will reach out in the spring and ask for the two thousand dollar allotment at that time.
So they're asking for the full four thousand right now? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, they always make the initial request of four thousand, then it's broken up into two payments, one with the fall season and then one with the spring season.
And they know that they're getting two and two. Yes.
Yes, yep.
I'm sorry, Kurt, can you just revisit? The five thousand came from on the cover literature that there was an expectation they were asking for five?
Uh, yes.
So I, I don't know. Again, I know you're saying they're running a surplus or if they had some other plans for that five thousand. But Chicago, if we could just send a note back to them that if they, you know, need that thousand or have a plan for it to, you know, prepare their documentation again to get it in front of the board for the additional thousand if they need it.
Sure.
Okay. I'll second it. I'll second it then.
You go with that, Trent? You go with that, Chris? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? Any abstentions? Alright, thank you for for your work on that, Kurt.
You're welcome.
Uh, and that's pretty much it, we had, do have one executive session item, um. So we have a motion to go into executive session for the uh acquisition of property, R E property for new middle school at seventy eight Pulaski Highway.
Motion to go into executive session.
Motion by Rivers, second by Tar, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, and John, who do you, who do you want for this meeting?
Uh, myself, uh, also Sheila O'Malley, who's been assisting with this project, and if possible, also Kurt Miller from the Financial Department.
Said he didn't want to come, I think.
Both.
Hey, now you're invited, we we might not let you in the room, we may kick you out.
Well, that's, it's, it's fifty fifty.
Yeah.
Motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
Motion by Mamon, second by Rivers, to uh come out of executive session, in executive session, we had one item. Uh, acquisition of property, R E property for new middle school at seventy eight Pulaski Highway, what's your pleasure?
I'd like to make a motion directing the city to obtain two independent appraisals on seventy eight Pulaski Highway.
Second.
Motion by Yaman, second by Adamowski. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
Reverse.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, big. Big happy birthday to Corp Counsel there, Mr. Rainey.